Good evening. Hi. Thank you all for showing up. My name is Bobby Fitch-Howman. I grew up here. I am the president/master of Broadbrook Grange, which has been holding pre-town meetings for many, many years. And we're very pleased that we're doing this in cooperation with the town of Guilford and that the town is making it possible that it is being televised so that folks can actually see it. If they're not here, they can't talk, but you can. So I'm glad that you're here. Write down any questions you have. And I only ask that you be as respectful as you can because town meetings can get very heated. This is a pre-town meeting to get you all educated and to get prepared for town meetings. So thank you very much. I am very pleased that we have Rick Zaymore, who happens to be a Grange member and basically has been our town moderator in the recent times. He will be moderating today. So thank you very much and have a good evening. The only thing is, we do have tons of cookies downstairs. One of them, one variety, is bacon, peanut butter, maple. Don't ask me. There's a crazy lady over here. There are big chocolate chip cookies. There are little chocolate chip cookies. There are brownies. There are gluten-free products. There are oatmeal raisin cookies. So, and there's lemonade. Well, it's not lemonade. It's water, iced water with lemon. And there's coffee. So we're pleased that you're not bringing all this up here to save our floor, but after, make sure you stay and get some food. Thank you.
Thank you, Bobby. I'm Rick Zaymore. I'm your moderator. Welcome to this year's pre-town meeting. Thank you, Grange. Thank you, Town Select Board, for hosting the BCTV. It's good turnout. The format tonight is going to be hearing from candidates to be elected by Australian ballot first. And they'll speak in order. We have four Select Board candidates and two for WSESD, School District, and we have one or two Lister candidates to hear from. And I would ask you to hold your questions for the candidates until everyone, until they've all spoken. And then hopefully we'll have time to take two questions for each candidate after they've spoken. I'm hoping that that portion of the evening will take about an hour and will be done about 7:30. And at that point, we'll go right to the Select Board's presentation of the articles. And there's some presentations that accompany those. There's some slideshows. And again, I would ask you to hold your questions about the articles until all of them have been presented. There's 27 articles. You know, there's potential for a long meeting. So we want to keep things moving along. And we want to have a good meeting, a civil meeting, and a productive meeting. So I'm glad you're all here. And let's get started. We'll start with the Select Board candidates. The first one to speak for three minutes will be Chip Carter.
All right. Well, first I'd like to thank Rick and the Select Board for giving all the candidates the time tonight at the pre-town meeting. I know it's part of the tradition, but it's definitely appreciated, especially, as he said, there's 27 articles on this, so it's going to be a long meeting at times. And I, for one, appreciate being able to stand up in front of you because I'm a relatively new face in Guilford. And so to be able to stand here and tell you a little bit about who I am and how I work is important to me and it means a lot. So I'm just going to run through some notes. But my wife Lori and I moved here in 2016. And two of the first people that we met in Green River were Addie and Addison Minot, who rolled out the warm welcome mat, which was greatly appreciated. And then Addie also recruited me to be a member of the Green River Village Preservation Trust that she and Addison ran so effectively for years. And I quickly learned two things. First, one cannot say no to Addie Minot. Not that you would want to. And two, there's a strong volunteer ethic here in Guilford, in this community. And that really means a lot to both Lori and I because I grew up in a small town in New Hampshire. She grew up just down the road in Greenfield, Mass. And for folks who might remember that, her mother and her grandparents' dairy, Smead Brothers Dairy, was in Greenfield, was a part of that community for a really long time. So when I decided to make a run for a Select Board, I really wanted to make sure I could get some good insight and input in the job. And so I had conversations, one-on-one conversations, with Select Board members, past members, current members, just to get some insight into the roles and responsibilities. And then one of the cool things I got to do was neighborhood meet and greets. And that was great because I realized coming into this meeting tonight, I've probably, gosh, been able to meet 45 to 50 people that I didn't know prior to this process starting, which I just, what I just think is a really cool bonus. And it gave me a chance at the meet and greet to sit down and talk to people about their issues, what they thought some of the issues in Guilford were, and more importantly, or just as important, that I was able to talk to them about what they thought some of the qualities needed to be to be a Select Board member. And this is their list. It was listen effectively, be an independent thinker, able to work in a group with a diverse multiple viewpoints, weigh the issues, and be mindful of Guilford's present and future. And when I took a look at this breakdown, that's essentially kind of who I am and what I had to do in my broadcast career. I needed to be well-versed in every subject that I was involved with. I worked in television for 25-plus years. And I would have to know as much, or even more, than whoever I was working with and involved with. I'm an independent thinker. Obviously, you have to be able to weigh the issues, and I did. And then I clearly had to communicate the details and the points of those issues in a simple, concise, and clear manner. And the job that I still enjoy, the part of the job that I still enjoy, although I know I'm just fully retired, was the research. I love diving into the details, the preparation that you would have to have. And I really think, you know, when you dig into the details, it's the details that really provide the big picture. So in my career, I covered everything from infrastructure to taxes to budgets, from the size of Guilford's budgets to billion-dollar stadium deals that were complex in terms of infrastructure, roads, taxes, traffic, state laws, local laws, rules, regulations, reports. And then I had to analyze that, break it all down, and be familiar with it, and deliver it in a way that was simple, concise, and good to understand, not complex, not multi-layered.
Chip, can you wind it up?
Yeah, I am right now.
Okay, thank you.
So I enjoyed the preparation. And the same preparation would continue with the Select Board, not just prepared, but well-prepared. And I really appreciate, as I said, the time to be able to step up in front of you like this. And I hope I earn your vote on March 5th. Thanks.
Okay, next we'll hear from Hannah Tustin.
All right. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having me here for an opportunity to talk about myself. Chip's kind of a hard act to follow. That was a great, great intro he did. Thank you, the Select Board and Rick as well. So my name's Hannah Tustin. I've been here in Guilford for about seven years. I've been in Vermont a little bit longer and grew up just south of the border in Berniston, not too far away. I got my passport and moved up here. And it's okay. Everybody still calls me a flatlander. I'm fine with that. So, you know, I wanted, I've been with municipalities for almost 11 years, or over 11 years. I was the Director of Public Works in Hartford, Vermont, for four years. And I was the Highway and Utilities Superintendent for the town of Brattleboro for seven. So I've been through 11 budget cycles. Really familiar with all the inner workings of municipalities and the legal ins and outs there. So that's something that I'd really like to bring to the table, you know, and just, you know, work with all of you and the people sitting at this table as well. You know, we have a small business. You might see me around town on Sunday mornings delivering baked goods to all the people who order from us. We have a lot of great customers. And it's been a great opportunity for me to reach out to them, get to know them, and meet a lot of new faces. I think Danny does great work. And I want to continue to support all of the awesome infrastructure work that he's doing and see if we can't find other opportunities to improve our roads, bridges, and other types of things. And I'll keep it short because I know we have a tight night. But if anybody ever wants to reach out, you can find me. I'm often in the Assistant Town Clerk's office as well. And that's about it.
All right, next we'll hear from Stephen Pritchard.
Hi, thank you. Probably a lot of you don't know me. A lot of you I probably do know from being children and having you grow up in, through the Recreation Department of Brattleboro. And probably a lot of you I know as parents from Brattleboro from there. And I spent 26 years there. Wonderful years. I moved up on the Slate Rock Road 31 years ago. Coming from a municipal system, I've already had, I've always had a strong appreciation of volunteer effort and done a lot of volunteering myself. I've been hesitant to get involved because I was an outsider. And coming from a really small community, I understand the workings of communities like that. So I Googled it. And I found that after 30 years, you're no longer an outsider. You're not necessarily a trusted insider, but you're not an outsider anymore. So I really felt like volunteering for the Select Board is something I strongly believe in. My, that's enough about me, really, because I'm not really interested in talking about me. I'm interested in talking about you. And you all are voices in the community. And it's something we really have to pay attention to, where the community wants to go and how not to shut out the community, how to make it open, accessible, and what do we want as a whole? I mean, what is the town? You're the town. You know, the town's not some piece of paper, you know, that says, "We're the town." No, it's us, you know. So we, we get to make these decisions. And I want to know that my email will be public information. My phone number. Call me. You want to discuss something about the town? I do too, you know. So I want to be readily accessible to everybody so that we can move forward. And I don't think moving forward necessarily means moving forward. I think we can retain what's so beautiful about Guilford. You know, we don't have to have jetways or something, you know. Let's keep it simple. Let's keep this process simple. Let's keep our lives simple. And that's my platform. Thank you.
Next we'll hear from Zahn Eastus.
Good evening, everyone. So great to see so many people here. And thank you to Rick and the Select Board for making this opportunity. So yes, I am running for a two-year seat to be re-elected to the Select Board. I have really learned a lot in the time that I've been on the Select Board. And I have learned how important it is to communicate, how to listen, how to pay attention to what's going on in the community to sense and balance how things can be put in the best of orders where possible. So I think that many of you probably have seen me at work, so you know the style that I present as a Select Board member. And like all the other candidates, it's not, I won't be trying to sell you on me. You already know, I hope, what my work looks like. And it probably will continue to look like that if I were elected. I think that I should just say a couple of things. That I have lived in Guilford, it turns out, the longest of any of the candidates this evening. I've lived here for over 40 years now. In the same place, right near the fairgrounds. And I am a musician and an arts administrator. But that was my, that was my career. And I, and so I had a lot of interactions with a lot of people. Being a conductor of orchestras is one of the things where I've learned a lot about how to bring disparate people and disparate voices together to create, for instance, a Beethoven Symphony or something like that. So I've gained a lot of experience in the world that way. And I will continue to bring it forward if possible. I'd also just like to thank the community for the incredible volunteerism in this community and the spirit of uplift that I feel from our community. As a Select Board member, I'm just continuously impressed with all of you and the work that you bring into this community to make this place such a special place to be. So I think that if there's anything that I would stand on this evening, it would be simply that I have learned a lot about statute. I have learned a lot about governance. I've learned a lot about how communities are meant to work in Vermont. And I remember learning, when I first became a Select Board member from Ann Ryder, she said, "It's remarkable how much you will need to know because every single town is its own town, and there's so much that has to be learned." I sort of heard her say that, but now I really understand it. And so I would just offer that there's a resource here that I have learned over the last five years. I've gained, and I'd like to offer that back to the community. So thank you very much.
And next we'll hear from two candidates for the School District. First is Brian Reamer.
Thank you all for being here. Thank you to the Select Board and Zahn. I appreciate the opportunity to share a little bit about who I am. I've lived in Guilford now since 1994. And so it's not, doesn't quite be our last candidate, but it's what I've got. So when I think about why I'm here, why I came today, I think about community. I think about collaboration, and I think about our kids. And when I first came to Guilford, we attended the Guilford Church quite a lot. And I noticed we have the same kind of lights here as they have in the sanctuary. And I looked up one day and there were a bunch of insects in the lights. I thought, when are they going to take and clean out those lights? Get rid of those insects? I realized I am the they. That community happens when they become I. So in this instance, this is a way for me to participate in community and build the kind of community that we have that makes Guilford as great as it is. This comes at a time when I'm able to do this because I've just retired. And before that, I was just like really too busy with work and spending a lot of time traveling up to Montpelier for my work there. But I think my work is also something that can really inform my participation on the school board. My work is as an educator with young people, as well as adults, in nonprofits and various organizations, most recently with the State of Vermont. When I'm training or leading a facilitation or facilitating a group, my purpose and my focus and my aim is to create an environment where everyone can learn and everyone can participate. And that happened, when that happens, we get a lot of different ideas and a lot of different threads that are pulled together when people listen carefully to one another. And we direct those threads towards one goal that we have in mind that we didn't know we had in mind before we began. So I think that's one of the things I'd like to bring to the Board, is that ability to help people collaborate. And I think that's really important for our children and our kids because of all of the stress that they endure or deal with or try to figure out in their, as they're growing up, related to the pandemic, or what they see on social media, or how they try to handle or understand world issues that feel, that make them feel like there's an existential threat of some sort. I think it's really important that we provide the kind of place in the school where those kids can find a community and can learn to work together. I work currently with a group of youngsters, teenagers, who are, it's a cross-cultural group, as well as an interfaith group, that is focused on fun and friendship and community service. And I also worked with, with youth services in the Diversion Board. And I was one of the authors of You Matter, Vermont's Youth Suicide Prevention Program. So I think that has given me some insight into some of the issues that youth are dealing with. And I really believe that schools are not just a place to teach academics, but it's really where we teach kids to be members of the community. Teach them to hone their skills and how to aim them to build the community that we all want to live in. Thank you.
Next up is Kelly Young.
Thank you for, everyone, for being here and for the Select Board for putting this on. There's a few more people here than there were last night, so it's, it's a new experience. Each life has the ability to touch other lives, which in turn touch yet more lives. And so, person by person, generation by generation, a world and a future are shaped. This is a quote by Thomas Kinkade, someone whom my mother, one of my greatest inspirations, specifically with regard to education, appreciated fondly. I found this in a little book amongst my mother's books and thought it was appropriate. My mother grew up in northern Vermont as the oldest of a family with 11 children. Education in particular, her college education, was crucial to her efforts to rise out of poverty. She shared her fortune with others as a math teacher for almost 35 years at Adult Basic Education, now Vermont Adult Learning. For many years, our home and even our car served as an office as she did this work with those who had challenges, including pursuing education through a traditional educational format. It was through growing up surrounded by this deep connection to education that I grew to appreciate the attention to quality education for each individual student. The voices of a community member can and should be strong and directed about issues. The voice of a board member should be strong and directed about the interests of the entire district and every student in the district. These are two very different experiences. I'm a board member who works in collaboration as a team with the entire board. What I, as a board chair, present to the community reflects the view of the entire board. I speak for the board, not myself. It is not about my opinion because it is not my personal opinion. I'm no longer a community member, but an elected board director. As board chair, one of my primary goals was to establish collegiality, partnership, and communication with the administration in the community, not mired in hostility, but rather working towards effective collaboration. I have worked to change the tone of the board meetings to being welcoming to the participation and comments of anyone coming to the board meetings. I have worked to rebuild a strained board-administration relationship by demonstrating professionalism at all times and working with administration to create a collaborative environment which focused on the students. Without collaboration, we cannot do our jobs. Without it, we do not serve the students nor the larger school community. I started with a Thomas Kinkade quote, so I will end here with another. "The more you give of yourself to others, the more joy and peace will flow into your own life." As I return to what has inspired me, to pursue continued service to the school district, I reflect on the strength of character that I witnessed from my, my mother throughout her life. This experience will be a part of me as long as I live. The lessons that I have learned as her daughter and as a mother myself have served as the motivation for my commitment to service to the community. This is what I bring back to the board if re-elected. I can only hope that I in some way measure up to the legacy my mother has left. Thank you.
Okay, now we'll hear from a candidate for Lister, Kathy Wilken. Auditor, oh, sorry. Sorry, I'm sorry. Auditor. You want to pull, pull the microphone down a little bit?
Ah, yes. Now I can shout. Excuse me, my timer is going off. My name is Kathy Wilken, and I'm running to be re-elected.
Can you speak close to the mic?
My name is Kathy Wilken, and I'm running to be re-elected as a town auditor. Auditors are responsible for the books, for examining the books and records of the town and for preparing the town report. The job has really changed since I began in 1989. We used to do a very informal amateur audit of the books, but that became harder and less reliable as the town's finances expanded rapidly. Now, the time, the town hires professional municipal auditors. And the job is mostly trying to make the professional audit understandable to members of the town, people who read the town report. Of course, we do keep an eye on what's happening with the town finances. Probably the best way that we do that is to talk with the people who do the work. Probably the best thing I've had is to ask questions. Things like, how do you figure out what the tax bill should be? And what do you do with the money when the tax bill gets paid? How do you know if that bill should be paid? And how do you record what happened to the money when it comes into town? And of course, adding up the columns and rows of numbers to make sure there's not a mathematical mistake somewhere. In the end, we produce the town report and try to make it something you want to read and you can understand when you read it. Something you'll enjoy reading it because it's a wonderful picture of our town.
And next we'll hear from Michael Frost for auditor. Is Michael here? Okay, I guess he's not here. All right, so let's take two questions now for Chip Carter. Any questions for Chip? Any questions for Hannah? Yes, David Eastus.
My question for Hannah is, it's my understanding that you're Assistant Town Clerk. And can you fill both roles? Or are you resigning if you're elected? I'm confused about that.
You want to speak close to the mic?
Sorry. We've consulted with the Vermont League of Cities and Towns. And Assistant Town Clerk is one of the positions that does not have a conflict with the Select Board. So I will continue to fill my role as the Assistant Town Clerk. And if there are items that come up in the board discussions that involve the Town Clerk's office, I would recuse myself from those discussions so there is no conflict of interest there. We actually have a handy-dandy chart right in the town office that shows all of the statutorily required positions within any municipality and how they mesh with different elected offices. So we're happy to share that with you if you want to come in and check it out, or anybody.
Okay, is there another question for Hannah? Okay, is there another question for Hannah? Nope. A question for Stephen Pritchard? Oh, we're gonna get out early. Question for Zain Estes? Okay, question for Brian Reamer. Quiet crowd. Okay, question for Kelly Young? Our question for Kathy Wilken. Jason? Well, maybe, maybe you can shout it out or come on up.
Well, I just wanted to make sure that Kathy had stated that the auditor position has changed. That is not true. Auditor position has not changed. The statute is still the same. We're still required to elect auditors. The auditors are still required to audit. They don't have to, I guess, at this point because we do hire a professional audit, but our town auditors are supposed to be the watchdogs of our community. And if Kathy is not here to be an auditor and actually audit, and she just wants to edit the report, well then she doesn't need to run for that position. She could just volunteer for it. So my question to you is, do you intend to actually audit? Or are you just gonna edit the report like you've been doing since 1989?
I think, as I said before, we do keep an eye on the finances. And we ask questions about how things go, and we track some things. I can't, we can't do a full $16,000 audit in our spare time, which is when we do this one. So we do as much as we can, but on amateur basis.
I guess my question was, are you gonna actually audit? Or are you just gonna edit the paper? Because you don't need to run for the auditor position. You just want to be the editor. So the auditor position, I would like to see the auditor sit side by side with our professional auditing firm. Right now, our auditors don't do that. We have three town-appointed members that actually sit alongside with our auditors, with the town auditors, not with our elected auditors. They're all appointed. It's our appointed town administrator, our appointed town treasurer, and our appointed assistant town administrator. They're the only one doing a detailed review of this audit. And yet we have people running for auditors who don't think that they actually need to audit. So I really just want to hear you say that you'd like to sit down side by side with our professional auditors, and, and you can speak to the audit because it's from your knowledge of the audit, not that you're just getting someone else's information and putting it into the paper.
I think, I think we do get information from the professional auditors. But for us to do what we can do, I think to work with the people who do the work is a good way to get information and to prepare an audit which we think is fair and honest.
Okay, is there any other question for Kathy? And if not, we will go to the articles. There we go. Okay. So each Select Board member will read each article. So I'll start. Article one, to elect a moderator for the ensuing year.
Article two is to hear the report of the town auditors.
Article three, to hear the report of the library trustees.
Article four is to elect the following officers: Cemetery Commissioner one, Library Trustee two, and Trustee of Public Funds one.
In this article, if you're reading along, there's going to be a correction. Article five, shall the voters of the town of Guilford authorize highway fund expenditures in the amount of $1,087,803 for the fiscal year July 1, 2024 to June 30, 2025, for which revenue will be raised through taxes and other sources? Because of the error in this warned budget article, Article five should be amended to $1,105,203. The error was the omission of, quote unquote, "transfers out to HRA $17,400." This is a standard required part of highway employee health insurance with no increase over the last year.
Article six, shall the town raise and appropriate the sum of $268,550 for the Guilford Volunteer Fire Department, an increase of $10,100 over last year?
Article seven, shall the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $35,000 for the Guilford Volunteer Fire Department Capital Improvement Fund? This is the same that was approved last year in the appropriation, excuse me, of 2020.
Article eight, shall the town raise and appropriate the sum of $3,000 for healthcare and rehabilitation services of southeastern Vermont HCRS to provide services to individuals, families, and children who are living with mental illness, developmental disabilities, and substance abuse orders, according to VSA 24, section 2691? The note is that HCRS is in year two of a three-year petition requirement before adding them to the Social Services article.
Article nine is the Social Service article. Shall the town raise and appropriate the sum of $21,093 for the following human service organizations? And would you like me to read through all of them? These, as you know, are all social services that have been vetted for a minimum of three years. And one note is that there was one social service visiting nurse and hospice of Vermont and New Hampshire that we used to allocate $3,500 for. But currently, they're no longer providing services for Guilford, so the budget reflects the subtraction.
The following four articles propose additional increases over last year. The budget is presented with all four article amounts included. A yes or amended vote will add an amount to last year's level funding. A no vote will allow last year's budget figure to move forward. Article 10, shall the voters of the town of Guilford authorize the expenditure of not more than $68,000 to contract with the Wyndham County Sheriff for law enforcement services? And we're happy to have Mark Anderson here from the Wyndham County Sheriff's Office, and he will present a description of the potential services. Thank you, Mark.
I'm not here to talk about myself. For those who don't know me, Mark Anderson, Wyndham County Sheriff. I've been with the Sheriff's Department though, so I am gonna talk about myself, since 2004. I cut my teeth here in the town of Guilford when I first started. Been part of this community in one way or another for a while. Talking about two services here. What we've done for the last 20 years, what we want to do. This article continues what we've done for the last 20 years. We know it. We know how it works. One of the things I'm currently advocating, and I've been working with the town of Guilford along with other towns in Wyndham County, is how to do it better. We're not ready for better yet. We're bringing in process for that, so I'm not talking about that. What we are talking about is contracting to provide a service. What my office does is contract for services. We do not raise taxes through the county budget for law enforcement services. Those primarily pay for our building, heating fuel for our building, some limited insurances. So the county tax doesn't cover law enforcement. State government pays for my salary, but it doesn't pay for law enforcement. So these contracts are the way that we are able to provide service to your town. What the number is, what you need, I try not to ever answer that question because I don't know. You're the community raising the funds to pay for the service. We are here to serve what you are willing and able to contribute. In this model, we charge a fee for, a fee for the service. And that, we would work with the Select Board to negotiate what it, what that looks like, whether it's speed enforcement, all the way up to 911 emergency response. At $68,000 a year, we would not be the 911 responder. We would have what's called a supplemental service. And that means that you would have the coverage of the state police. So when you call 911, they would come, they would provide the service in an emergency. And we would be here to increase presence that you don't currently have. I'm gonna be here eating some cookies. So if anyone wants to step out and ask me questions, I'm happy to talk. You can also reach me through my office. I will be at town meeting as well. So I'll be accessible. I don't want to get the hook from the moderator, so I'm gonna run now. Thank you.
Article 11, shall the voters of the town of Guilford authorize the expenditure of not more than $14,500 for increased Assistant Town Administrator, Assistant Town Treasurer staffing? And the increase would partly support a new staff member and would eliminate weekly hours of overtime from the current workload from both the town administrator and the town treasurer. And sadly, our town administrator, Erica Elder, is down with the flu. But we do have Ellie here. Ellie, would you like to speak to this?
Hit this to advance it?
All right, shall I go ahead?
Sure, go to the next one. I guess I gotta go like that. So I can also present Erica's presentation that she prepared.
Is Ellie close to the mic?
Sorry, I'm not used to mics. Yes, it's great. I can see this with my glasses, but I can't see that. Okay, so I'm Ellie Mayanen. I'm currently the town treasurer and the delinquent tax collector, and I provide financial services through the town for Algiers Fire District, which is the sewer that's in Algiers and goes to about, I want to say about 90, 90 households. Okay? So I started off in this presentation thinking about the responsibilities of the treasurer. You can go to the, I'll just do this quickly. So there's daily responsibilities that are pretty simple. Mail, emails, respond to all the inquiries you get every day, answer the phone from X, Y, and Z taxpayer or person who wants to move to Guilford. Weekly payroll, there's lots of things that are included in that. You can go to the next slide. Accounts receivable. I'm gonna zip through these because there's a printout in the back, and you can certainly pick one up and ask me questions about it. Accounts payable, reconciliation of all the town's accounts and investments. Create the delinquent, excuse me, create the tax bills and get them out to everybody. And all the delinquent tax bills, communicate with taxpayers and delinquent taxpayers, make agreements with delinquent taxpayers who are having issues paying their bills. Next. Other responsibilities, supporting the budget process in the town, providing the town orders with information to help create the annual town report, answer all the questions about all the reports and that come out of Nemrick that I'm looking over. Also, participate in any way that I'm asked with the professional auditors because they usually ask for lots of information so they can test everything that is in the general ledger that explains everything, every expense and every revenue. And again, financial services for Algiers Fire District. So why do we need an assistant treasurer? There are increasing demands on my workload and time. There are so many reports that have to be done, weekly, monthly, quarterly, annually. I get emails, I have to say, probably every other week from somebody saying, okay, this next report is due, or the census is due, or there's lots of things that needs to be done. Two important pieces are separation of duties and best practice. Nobody should be the sole person to deal with any transaction from beginning to end. There should always be another person to share the responsibilities. Let's just take of payables. So there's receiving, getting the payables, talking to the vendors. There's entering the payables into the system. There's then matching up checks with all the payables. The warrants have to get printed so that the Select Board can approve everything. And then the payables have to go out. Now, if one person is in charge of all those steps, one, a mistake might not get caught. But the separation of duties is put in place to decrease the risk of fraud or any security issues, or just simply making mistakes. So that's important. Best practice, although an assistant treasurer is not required by state statute, I don't understand why not, but it is best practice to have more than one set of eyes, as I just mentioned, on the financial transactions. It is something that auditors look for, it is professional and our local town auditors. It is something that passive, our insurance company asks about if we're, you know, how well we're utilizing these kinds of separation of duties. And it's also highly recommended by Vermont League of Cities and Towns that there's an assistant treasurer. Because you know what? Not, what's, what did I say in here? No one does everything 100% right all the time. It's just, I don't know anybody that does. I know I mistakes, make mistakes occasionally, and it's great to have somebody check that. Next. So bringing an assistant in as an assistant treasurer, it'll help me get back to 40 hours a week. Right now, I'm working an average of 44 and a half hours, so four and a half hours of overtime a week. If you look at that over a year, that's about $9,000 worth of overtime that could be used for an assistant. So I don't have to work overtime, and it saves the town some money. I would like to get back to 40 just to increase my work-life balance. We all need a little bit of that. Again, best practice. So right now, Erica is my second set of eyes. She's the town administrator. So she reviews payroll entry that I do. She reviews accounts payable before they go to the Select Board. She reviews the warrants, any journal entries that need to be made. She reviews those. And she also has been reviewing the reconciliations that I've been doing. So she's my second set of eyes. But Erica has her own job, and she needs to be able to do that. Erica's also not trained as a treasurer, so she can't fill in for me if I need somebody to fill in for me. So cross-training is important, as I just mentioned. Again, a separation of responsibilities. Okay, go ahead, next one. So the assistant treasurer position has actually been in the budget consistently for many years. Traditionally, the town clerk and treasurer cross-trained and supported the other's role as an assistant. But in November of this fiscal year, that changed, and the roles became separate. Also, in fiscal year '24, which is this fiscal year, the Select Board by me to move the income from the 8% delinquent tax penalty, which was previously paid to the delinquent tax collector. It is now getting moved into the revenue in the general account. This annually is about $12,000 to $20,000. Depending on the number of delinquent taxpayers, the amount of money that's delinquent, and if the payments are made toward the delinquent taxes. This money could be used to support the Assistant Treasurer and the Assistant Town Administrator position. With that, I'm going to say that's it for me. If you have any questions, let me know. And there's a printout in the back that shows more of the responsibilities. So can I move to Erica?
Quickly.
Does hers come up?
Nope, we don't have that.
Okay. Daily Administrator, daily and regular Administrator responsibilities, a brief overview. So she works with all the town departments, staff, commissioners, and committees, principal support for the Select Board, and liaison between the Select Board and other parties, and other parties, comma, town office, IT support. She manages the town website, identifies and researches grant opportunities, reports to granting organizations, prepares and executes RFPs, requests for...
Proposals.
Proposals, thank you. Creates project worksheets for revenues and expenditures, provides fiscal checks and balances for payroll payables, responds to residents' issues and complaints. Biweekly, she reports to the Select Board with budget status, identifies improvements, prepares meetings and background materials for Select Board to review, researches relevant policy, precedent, and statutes. Annually, she works on the budget for the following year, confirms annual Select Board appointments, compiles materials for town reports, administration of town assets and management plan, works with local and regional planning commissions. Last part, I believe, what can an Assistant Town Administrator do? Provide administrative support to town boards, commissions, and committees, collect invoices, proof of payment, and other documents for grant reimbursements, and maintain project worksheets, assist with writing and putting together grant applications and grant award reimbursements, assist in the preparation and execution of requests for proposal, assist in managing the town's website, making sure all are posted and up to date, upload public materials in advance of meetings, assist in creating reports as needed for the town report and town meeting warrants. Almost done. How will that help the town? Current average Town Administrator's overtime is 2.5 hours a week. Annually, this could make available $6,300. Cross-training and backup would be beneficial, would be able to cover in case of an absence. That would be her assistant to be able to cover. Quicker response time for citizens' requests and inquiries, increased documentation for Select Board meetings and activities, more time to devote to time-consuming research tasks. And then she says, thank you for considering.
Miranda.
I already did that.
We're going to move on to Article 12. Shall the voters of the Town of Guilford authorize the expenditure of not more than $14,500 for increased Town Clerk and Assistant Town Clerk staffing? This increase would support additional hours and salary as requested by the Town Clerk. Previously, the Town Clerk position was 30 hours per week. This new request increases the salary and moves the position to 40 hours per week. The Town Clerk can speak to the proposal.
All right. Good evening. My name is Hannah Tustin. I think you guys already know that. I'm here representing the Town Clerk's Office this evening. Danielle is toiling away, working on the elections, so we kind of decided to divide and conquer tonight, and then I would present, and she would keep logging absentee ballots. So we've made a request that I'm going to, I'll dig into a little bit more, but to increase the hours for this position, it's traditionally been funded at 30 hours per week on a salary basis. And so we wanted to bring the issue up of maybe increasing the hours to 40 and making it a full-time position. So, next slide, please. So I'll go over a quick slide of what the Town Clerk's Office responsibilities are. The Town Clerk is the elections official for the town. This year, we have three elections between the local election, the presidential primaries, and then the presidential election in November. The Town Clerk's Office is also responsible for recording and receiving the town's archives, recording deeds related to real estate and private property transactions, recording and filing the proceedings of annual and special town meetings, oversees and organizes the BCA, attends WSESD school meeting annually, management of the voter list, and, you know, does all of the customer, in addition to Ellie and Erica, does customer service and walk-ins types of things. Next slide, please.
And maybe a little closer to the mic.
Sure. Yeah. So I won't go over all of the data in this, but this is just a quick chart of where the totals of the Town Clerk budget have been at for the last eight years. You know, it's remained relatively level even with the additional requests that we're asking for this year. In the last eight fiscal years, the increase has only been about $2,000. So when you're looking at inflation and pay rates increasing, you know, with some changes in staffing and salary, this budget line item has really remained level. So it's not a huge effect on the bottom dollar of the taxes, but just wanted to show this information. Next slide, please, son. So this is kind of a quick boil-down of the changes that are being requested by this office. So the Town Clerk has made a request to increase the salary. She is currently at $23.10 to $25, so that's about a $1.90 an hour increase. Again, asking for an increase from 30 hours a week to 40 hours a week. The Assistant Town Clerk salary is getting a slight raise, and increasing, you know, the Assistant Town Clerk hours from 10 to 12 on an as-needed basis, you know, with workload, or, you know, to support the Town Clerk's Office in an absence or anything else. Excellent. Thank you. So why is this important? You know, the Town Clerk's Office is a statutorily required role for any municipality in Vermont, and so is the Assistant Town Clerk's role. Those are both defined in state statute that each town is required to have. It really requires a professional capability that's pretty unique. You know, you have to be a great customer service rep and also a legal clerk in the same day when you're recording documents. And, you know, the Town Clerk gets a lot of questions, everything from, you know, phone calls about how the roads are that day to, you know, questions about elections. So having somebody in that role that's, you know, being compensated fairly is really important for the level of professionalism that's required for that position. You know, and then when you start to look at the math, you know, the Town Clerk's Office is currently open 36 hours a week for a position that's traditionally been funded at 30 hours per week. So really, you know, six extra hours that are, you know, unpaid over a year, it adds up a lot. It adds up to 312 hours over somebody's life over a year that, you know, they're kind of donating to the town. So, you know, being at 40 hours per week kind of makes this a more fair situation for anybody who's in that role. Every year, the Vermont League of Cities and Towns releases a benefits and compensation report. So we went through that and, you know, dialed in all of the data that they have there. It's an incredible document. And there are currently 16 municipalities in Vermont who, you know, have populations at or below the current level in Guilford who have full-time Town Clerks. So it's really not an unreasonable request that, you know, this would be a full-time position based on, you know, the amount of workload that's coming in. And on any annual, any, on any year, often the statutory requirements for a Town Clerk's position are increased. This year, they're actually looking at requiring that all records be, all land records be digitized and publicly accessible. So although that is something that would likely be performed by an outside consultant, the management and education around that is something that would come out of the Town Clerks and then the annual maintenance after that. So it just kind of tricks up a little bit every single year. I think, you know, that's really it for us. We're going to keep it short and... All right. Hannah, can I ask a question?
No, not right now.
Oh, I can't? Okay. Those questions.
Yeah.
Okay, we'll go to Article 13. Shall the voters of the Town of Guilford authorize the expenditure of not more than $33,000 for increased library staff and program services? These would partially support a new full-time library director position. Kathy is retiring. Thank you for your services, Kathy. Library trustees will speak to this proposal.
My name's John Shaw. I'm a library trustee. I'm the treasurer on the board of the library currently. And I will give you a little presentation here. So we can swap. The Guilford Free Library is a municipal library that's governed by a board of trustees, and the trustees are elected by town residents. Just to give us an intro, and for Article 13, the $33,000 increase comes from combined total increase of two line items in the town budget, the library wages and the books and The biggest change this year is that the current library director, Kathy, is retiring. She has done some amazing work over 25 years, and so we are sad to see her go. But as the trustees are planning for this transition, we are hoping to create a full-time library director position. This is in response to the growing complexity and requirements of the job, and it will help attract the most qualified candidates to fill that position. So the position would be full-time with benefits, and the wage would be increased to a professional level. And the books and services, I'll talk about in a minute. The specifics for the increase on the, for the wage, it would go up to $28.06 per hour. That's up from $29.01. $21.09, sorry. The hours per week would go up to 32. That's an increase from 22, which is 20 hours for the library director and two hours for a part-time technology services position. Where did $28.06 come from? The Vermont Library Association recommends $28.06 as a professional minimum for the position of library director. And we researched a number of different sources. It looks like the names are gone from the bottom, so I can tell you, we have the Vermont Library Association all the way on the left, then the Vermont League of Cities and Towns. The Vermont Legislature commissioned a working group on the status of public libraries in Vermont. That's the third one. The fourth is the U.S. Bureau of Labor Statistics, which issues a report on each state specifically. So that's for Vermont. And then the last two are Indeed.com and Salary.com. And so those are an indication of current job listings. Okay. And why 32 hours per week? Currently, Kathy has been working several unpaid hours every week. And the new position would also include those, the two hours per week of the part-time technology services position. The library would be open more hours, which has been requested in our community surveys over the years, and more services and resources will be available, creating greater access. Okay, and then moving over to the books and services piece, as a municipal library, the recommended best practice from the State Department of Libraries is to have books and services included in the town budget. We currently rely on fundraising by the trustees and the friends of the Guilford Free Library to pay for these, but including it in the town budget would provide a stable funding source. Okay, and this, that chart just is telling you what adds up to the total, and it's collections, both digital and physical collections, the Catamount Library Network, and the fees for the courier service for interlibrary loan. So our vision for the future is to hire a full-time library director, to become accessible to everybody in the community, which is something we're not right now, and we're trying to change, to be open more hours so that people have more access to library services and resources, to build upon our current collaborations with the school and the town commissions and other community groups, and to create new programming and services that meet more needs, new patrons, and the evolving needs of patrons. So that's, that's all I have, so thank you. And there's a printout of, that tells some of these details on the back, and feel free to ask me questions if you see me. All right.
So moving ahead to Article 14. Shall the voters of the Town of Guilford authorize general fund expenditures for operating expenses of $831,856, of which $657,196 shall be raised by taxes and $174,660 by non-tax revenues for the fiscal year July 1, 2024 to June 30, 2025, according to VSA 17, Section 2664. And this bottom line may change based on decisions that we make at town meeting for Article 6 through 13.
Article 15. This is a citizen-led petition. Shall the Town of Guilford hold its annual meeting on the Saturday immediately preceding the first Tuesday in March at 10:00 a.m.? And I believe Julie Beat will speak to this proposal. Australian ballot voting for candidates would still occur on the first Tuesday in March. So Julie.
Hi, everyone. I'm Julie Beat.
Get closer to the microphone.
About a year ago, I put together a survey to the town, put it out online, asking about people's attendance at town meeting. put it out online, asking about people's attendance at town meeting. 62 people responded. The survey asked, what would be the best time for town meeting for you? 68% of the people who responded said a weekend would be their time of choice. 26% said Tuesday. They'd like to keep it on a Tuesday. And 6% said, chose another day of the week. There's not a day or a time that will work for everyone. But choosing a time that works for the greatest number of people is just common sense. Vermont employers are supposed to give you time off to attend town meeting. But if you've ever worked at a job, you know, all employers are not accommodating. And not all jobs allow for taking time off. We live here in Guilford on a border town. If you work in Greenfield or Keene, your employer doesn't have to, the law doesn't apply. If you work from home for, from, with an employer who's out of state, you're out of luck. If you're self-employed, you might not have the luxury of giving yourself the day off when your customers expect you to be there. It makes no sense to hold a town meeting at a time that isn't accessible to most people. We're meeting right now in the evening, not at 10:00 a.m. for this very reason. Town meeting is a beautiful tradition. It's an opportunity for the townspeople to discuss, debate, and vote on town budgets and articles in person. But are we unintentionally gatekeeping whose voices can be heard by keeping the meeting on a weekday morning? Limiting the amount of time that polls are open is considered a form of voter suppression. Limiting whose voices can be heard at town meeting is also a form of voter suppression. Our community is healthy and vibrant when we allow as many possible voices to be heard. Some people have said to me, other towns have changed town meeting day, and it hasn't made a big difference. So we should just keep it on a Tuesday. In the survey, 68% of the people said they'd prefer a weekend. But a survey's not going to predict actual attendance. If we change the day and there's no change in attendance, we will only be faulted for sending the message to our neighbors that they are welcome at town meeting. If you install a wheelchair ramp to a building and only a few people a year actually use it, should we take down the ramp or consider it a failure? Of course not. I ask everyone who attends town meeting on Tuesday to think of your neighbor who is working and can't attend. Tradition isn't a good enough reason to maintain inequitable access to a town-wide meeting. I ask those of you who love and attend town meeting to vote to make it accessible to your neighbors and change town meeting day to Saturday. Thank you.
We're moving on to Articles 16 and 17. We have some background context information before we read the articles. According to Vermont statute, there are three types of issues that can be voted by Australian ballot: elections, budget, and public questions. Currently, Guilford uses Australian for a portion of elections, such as select board members, listers, town auditors, and school board candidates. All other elections are voted from the floor. Statute requires that to alter current practice on any of these three types of issues, that vote must take, must be taken from the floor at the annual town meeting or at a special town meeting. And here is Article 16. I would point out that this is a citizen-led petition. Shall the town of Guilford adopt all budget articles by Australian ballot?
All right. Good evening again. Just for the sake of transparency, I'm here. This is a citizen-led position, petition. Danielle Latulip submitted this as a citizen. And again, she is not available tonight. So I'm here in my citizen capacity to present on this item. So we can move on to the next slide, please. So just to kind of repeat a little bit of what Michael said. Australian ballot is voting by confidential paper ballot that's submitted into a ballot box and counted in the same way that we currently process our elected official elections at this time. So there's been a lot of questions about, does this eliminate town meeting? And so one of the things that's really important for everybody to understand is that Vermont state statute actually requires that if Australian ballot is the method that's being used to approve our budget and any public questions, that the town actually hold an informational hearing about the budget. So there would still be an opportunity, very similar to this, for everybody to come together and discuss what's being proposed. So we would still be able to maintain that tradition pretty much in its current format. Next slide, please on. So I wanted to give an overview of the current method of budget approval. We, as you know, we use the town meeting style of budget approval. In order to vote, registered voters must be present on the floor to vote and approve both the budget and articles. Town meeting is held on the first Tuesday of March with a 10:00 a.m. start time. Currently, Guilford has about 1,735 registered voters. And historic attendance at town meeting has been anywhere between 140 and 175 people. So that's only about 8% to 10% of our voters really participating in our budget and article approval process. And as you know, because you're all sitting here tonight, we have an informational pre-town meeting to present the budget and articles. Next slide, please. So let's look at some facts about voter participation. Again, the current voter registration is around 1,735 people. Going, you know, repeating the stat about how many people are able or do participate in town meeting. During COVID, when town meeting was shut down, we had a really significant increase in the number of ballots that were returned. We had over 700 people vote on our budget and articles. So this means that that difference, that 30% more of our population participated in our voting process because Australian ballot was available to them instead of coming into town meeting. And last year's town meeting was the year that we returned to in-person town meeting. And the participation was the same as it has been historically. So we lost all those voters again. Next slide, please on. So why Australian ballot? I want to thank Julie for doing a great presentation just before me because she kind of said a lot of the things that I wanted to be able to say. This is really about voter equity and accessibility. You know, we talk on a national level about increasing voter accessibility at our polls and making it easy for people to vote. And right now, there's a lot of people who just can't or don't want to come to town meeting. Maybe they don't feel comfortable asking questions or voting in a public manner. I mean, you know, raising your hand on a nay on something that's really popular. I mean, everybody's staring at you. That's, that can be kind of scary for people. So this gives, you know, the opportunity for people who want someone, not an enemy. That's a big word. I'm not going to try again. You know, but again, like Australian ballot will provide voters who are homebound, traveling without transportation, uncomfortable voting in a public setting, they don't have childcare, they're unable to be absent from work on a weekday, or simply seek the convenience of a mail-in ballot for our budget and articles to be approved. Again, like the state of Vermont does require towns who utilize Australian ballot to hold an informational public hearing. Town meeting is currently held at the GCS gym. Interesting fact that if there were ever a significant increase in the number of voters, there may be capacity issues there. So I don't know if the fire chief was, wants to talk about that or not. You know, and there are many towns in Vermont who, you know, in the last two years have explored or voted on the idea of using Australian ballot to increase their voter engagement. We have had a lot of conversations with the town of Marlborough, who just transitioned to this last year. And it's being met with a lot of positivity. So, you know, it's something that we're kind of excited to explore and see how it goes. And, you know, I think that's kind of it for now. So I did a presentation for Article 17, which is shall the town approve Australian ballot for article questions as well? Because of the way state statute is written, those two items have to be approved separately. So in the interest of time, I did do a second presentation. It's identical. It's just replacing articles with budgets. So we'll try to keep everybody's night a little shorter and... There it is.
Okay, to reiterate, this is a citizen-led petition. Article 17 is a citizen-led petition. Shall the town of Guilford vote on all public questions by Australian ballot?
Article 18. Shall the town exempt from taxation for three years the real estate owned by the Guilford Recreation Club, Parcel 687 and 698? A discount of $1,151.40 is the total combined discount.
Article 19. Shall the town exempt the taxation for three years the real estate owned by the Guilford Fair Association, Parcel 688, a discount of $936.72?
Article 20. Shall the town exempt from taxation for four years the real estate owned by the Guilford Volunteer Fire Department, Parcel 310? A discount of $9,510.86?
Article 21. Shall the town exempt from taxation for four years the real estate owned by the Guilford Volunteer Fire Department, Parcel 311? A newly acquired parcel, a discount of $3,175.30?
Article 22. Shall the town exempt the tax, from taxation for five years the real estate owned by the Green River Village Preservation Trust, Parcel 536.1? A discount of $750.60?
Article 23. Shall the town exempt from taxation for five years the real estate owned by the Green River Village Preservation Trust, Parcel 633? This is a newly acquired parcel, a discount of $488.40?
Article 24. Shall the town exempt from taxation for five years the real estate owned by the Broadbrook Community Center, Parcel 228? A discount of $10,899.81?
Article 25. Shall the town authorize the town treasurer pursuant to Vermont, 332 VSA, Section 4791, to collect current taxes without discount?
Article 26. Shall the town vote that overdue taxes will bear interest at a rate of 1% per month or fraction thereof from the due date of such tax to be charged after October 15th, 32 VSA, Section 5136?
And Article 27. Transact any other business that may lawfully come before said meeting. Okay, that concludes the select board's presentation of the articles. What we can do now is start having questions about individual articles. I would ask that we not jump around. If there's a question about a certain article, that if you have a question about that article, to follow up with your question. And we'll try and, you know, dispose of each article that way, rather than jumping from one to another and then back again. And I don't think it matters where we start. So if anyone's got a question for the select board or the presenters, now's the time to raise your hand. Connie.
I wondered if the materials of the new town presentation are on the town website?
Yes, thanks, Connie. I got a note from Erica, who's at home preparing it right now. And they'll be on the website, perhaps this evening, but certainly tomorrow.
The question was, are the PowerPoints on the town website? And the answer is yes, tomorrow. Yes, Dolores.
With the, with the assistant, with the town administrator, who is now not going to be helping the treasurer, will that, will that cut enough hours that we don't need an assistant administrator? I mean, it sounds like right now she's putting a lot of work into helping Eli out going over and stuff. And if we're going to get an assistant treasurer, it seems a little redundant to have a, an assistant to be administrator.
I'm not sure to be, I don't know how to answer that exactly. There's a lot there that you said. I think what you're suggesting is, if I understand correctly, that the hours that the town administrator is currently using to assist, as assistant treasurer, those would be relieved. And then would we need to then also hire an assistant to help the town administrator?
Exactly.
Okay, okay, great. I think, as I understand it, I'll just say what I, in talking with the town administrator and the town, and the town treasurer about these, what I understand is that though we're describing it as assistance for both of these in order to cross-train, that in fact, the bulk of the work would be, as you're proposing, would be to assist the town treasurer, of this assistance work would be to assist the town treasurer. And so that as, as we learn what the capacities are going forward, that then there might be the opportunity of branching more into the administration, into the administrative role, as was described in the presentation. I don't know if that answers it or not satisfactorily, but that's what I understand.
Dave?
Maybe I'm confused or didn't hear or read something right, but it is a single person, part-time, to assist both the administrator and the treasurer. Is that correct?
Yes.
Then that answers, I think, the question. The, the, it is bringing up both positions. I mean, it's a single position, so it's not one filling the other type of thing. I'm not saying that very well, but...
Well, I think, I think the trick is it's probably hard for us to say exactly who's going to get how many hours for which moment until we get into it and figure it out. But the bulk, as I understand it, the bulk of the work that needs assistance right now, and certainly the notion of, of a second set of eyes is more with the town treasurer than it is with the, than with the town administrator. Good point, though.
One person?
One person, yes.
One position?
Yeah.
With regard to, I have a question with regards to the Australian ballot. One common and I think very useful feature of voting in town meeting, particularly for budgetary items, is the issue of, there are often amendments made to amounts of, amounts of funding for particular items. Under Australian ballot, how would those things be handled?
Did people hear the question? The question was, under the current, from a floor voting on budgets, there are amendments... The question was, under the current, from a floor voting on budgets, there are amendments that can be proposed, budgets can be changed, how would that happen with Australian ballot?
I can speak to that. There is no opportunity with Australian ballot for amendments like this to be proposed to amend the budget. So, the budget would be presented as a budget that would be voted either up or down by the town through Australian ballot. In the case where it's voted up, then that budget simply goes forward as presented. In the case where it's voted down, then the budget process has to start over again, and the voting process has to then happen again. But there would be informational meetings like this, but we can't do any amending business at this meeting. So, that would... that option would not be available.
Other questions?
I have a question. So, this is a question for Ellie and would have been for Danielle, but maybe Hannah can answer it as well, and it's for clarification. So, in November, the positions were a town treasurer for 30 hours, and then that town treasurer, Ellie, also was a 10-hour assistant town clerk. Danielle was... had a 30-hour position as a town clerk, and then she was a 10-hour assistant treasurer for the town clerk. This, to me, makes perfect sense, that the town clerk and the treasurer would work together to cross-check work. So, I'm not sure exactly why that changed, however, I feel that it... that change prompted Article 11 to partially pay for the treasurer not having an assistant. So, which, you know, increases the budget. So, I just wanted clarification as to why that happened.
So, I can speak to this a little bit with what my understanding from Danielle is that, you know, she, in her role, was already working more hours than she was currently budgeted for, and also trying to squeeze in assisting Ellie as her assistant town treasurer. So, in the interest of being able to do her job well and in a dedicated manner, she made the decision to, you know, change up that staffing so that she had someone who was an assistant, a dedicated assistant town clerk, who was really able to focus on what she... what that person was doing, and Danielle was able to really focus on being able to be a town clerk.
Thank you.
Jethro?
I just had a quick question. Jethro, I was... so I'm still a little bit unclear, so did... I wish Danielle was here to answer this, but so did Danielle fire Ellie? Is that how it works? So Danielle fired Ellie and then hired you?
Yep. I mean, I don't really think terminations or employment changes like that are really appropriate to discuss here, but yes, I was hired as the assistant town clerk.
So, after Danielle fired Ellie?
Yes.
Ellie was appointed.
So, I'll just step in here and say, fired might be the... not a word we would all choose to use. Danielle made the decision to rescind Ellie's role as assistant town clerk.
With the Select Board's...
Nope. The Select Board has no oversight over the town clerk role, so it's a town clerk responsibility required by statute to have an assistant in, you know, as an assistant clerk.
So Ellie, who's been working for however many years on this, was terminated, so not fired, but terminated, and then Brennan was hired in her place. Okay.
Maggie?
Hi, Ellen. Hi. So, you may mention that part of the justification for the hour increase was office coverage. So, I'm just trying to get at the speed here. Am I understanding correctly that recently is November, Danielle's position was paid for 40 hours a week of office coverage?
That is correct at this time.
And then what happened to the 10 hours that is no longer paid for that?
So, at this time, she is being compensated for her additional hours. That is temporary until I have been trained, and that she can be able to turn more work over to me.
And so between the two of you, you can't figure out office coverage for the 40 hours?
That's a Danielle decision in her role as the town clerk, how she would want to staff that. You know, town clerk work is pretty specific, and being able to step into that role and be able to handle all the stuff that she does without, you know, her assistance, you know, is going to take a little time.
So, before November, there was 40 hours a week that could possibly cover the 36 hours of overtime?
I'm not sure I understand.
That's correct, Maggie. Before November 30th, there was... there was 40 hours of available town clerk role in the office.
Okay, thank you.
Steve?
Steve Lemke, Green River. Hannah, when Danielle decided that she no longer wanted to do the assistant treasurer position, correct? I want to point out that something that Zan said. Town clerks, and particularly in Guilford, and not necessarily in all towns...
Can you speak up a little bit, Steve?
Yes, all towns... Town clerks in Guilford, not necessarily in all of our towns, are not... there's no supervis... no supervision of the town clerk other than us. All right? We hired Danielle to do a job for a certain number of hours, for a certain amount of pay, and it was her choice to accept that position offered by the town at the time last year. Now Danielle, because there is no supervision... I'm not saying what the board would or wouldn't do in this situation, but because there is no direct supervision, Danielle can do what she wants, when she wants, basically to make changes like this. And then it causes a reaction. So, you know, when Ellie did her presentation, and she sort of slid through that part, so in November, there were some changes, and on you went, okay? So, it's a situation that, in my opinion, is a little rollover in this situation. We, as a town, hired Danielle to do the job, and within the year that she was hired, she's now changed the number of hours, the amount of compensation, gotten rid of the assistant treasurer who's been... and to digress for a second more, there was a situation where, for years, this town worked hard to get those numbers, I mean, those eyes on the prize, that the treasurer, assistant treasurer, and assistant town clerk would be opposite of each other, but they would both have that knowledge, so they would know that there were any issues going on. But by Danielle just summarily saying, Ellie, we don't want you... I don't... not we, I don't want you to do that. She didn't come to us as a town and say, I'd like to propose a town meeting, these changes. She just made those changes. And I, for one, take great issue with that. And the fact that somebody else might make more money than she does, it's not fair to walk down the street and say, well, you make more money than I do, so I want more money. You make more money than I do, so I want more money. Danielle accepted the job put forth by us, and I think if Danielle wants to make the changes, Danielle should come to the town and propose those changes as she somewhat is now, but already Hannah is in position. Ellie is not doing her position anymore. Hannah's in her position, so those are fait accompli. And I think that's not a good situation for this town to be in.
Hi. I'm just going to address the situation. Nothing in particular, but something that has just struck me down, that Danielle is in that position because we, as a town, voted her in.
Mm-hmm.
Correct? We all voted her in. And one person in this room is standing up and pointing a lot of fingers at somebody who's been hard at her job. Has she made any mistakes that anybody knows of? Has she slid anything under the rug? Has anything gone awry since Danielle's been doing her job? No. So, I don't know. When you point your finger, this three more pointing back at yourself.
Thank you. This is... this is kind of... this is pretty sour for me. You know, last year, we had appointed town administrator Peter Rude. He was our town administrator for years, for years. Then we had Penny Marine, who was our town clerk for over a decade. Penny took on two roles. She was a treasurer and the town clerk. That's unreasonable to ask for anyone to do those two roles, and she saved us a ton of money. But guess what happened when Peter Rude left? We appointed a new town administrator and gave them about a $12,000 to $15,000 raise with zero experience. And then we hired a... appointed a town treasurer, and guess what? We gave them a raise. But who are we not giving a raise to? The people we vote for. Steve, we vote for Danielle. We get an opportunity to vote for her. I didn't get an opportunity to vote for our town treasurer, or our town administrator, or our new appointed town assistant administrator. That's not even on our budget. How did that even happen? Our budget is over. Our town administrator budget is over. Our town clerk's budget is not over. Our town administrator budget is over, and we gave them raises. The only person who didn't get a raise was the only person with any experience in this town now, is Danielle, and we voted for her. I did not get a chance to vote for Ellie. I did not get a chance to vote for Sheila Morse, who's our assistant town administrator somehow, and yet our budget is skyrocketing. Who authorized that budget? We set a budget last year for our treasurer, for our town clerk, for our town administrator. Why is our town administrator budget over? Why is our town treasurer's budget over? Why is our town treasurer not saying, you cannot pay this bill because our budget is over? You have some nerve to stand up and talk to like that about Danielle. We elected her. We had an opportunity to elect her.
Ellie?
I just want to make a correction. I was actually voted in last year as treasurer.
You could be fired right now.
Can you please let Ellie speak?
I was voted in last year as treasurer at town meeting. I was... after that, I was appointed as treasurer, and that was approved at town meeting. So, I want to make those two corrections. I also want to make a correction, that I started at a salary lower than was offered to me because I didn't feel like I needed to make that much money and I wanted to contribute to the town. I also want to say that Danielle did get a raise, and you haven't come to me to talk to me about anything about who gets paid what. And I would love, because that's public information, if you want to come and see, come and see. She has gotten raises just like everybody else. So, I don't know where you're getting your information from, but it's not correct.
Are we done? Oh, sorry, what am I missing? Oh, sorry, go ahead.
If Danielle was working 40 hours before with the treasurer and was... she worked 40 hours, why can't she just do 40 hours with the whole town clerk business?
That's what she is doing right now. She is doing that temporarily. What we're talking about at this moment is about next fiscal year, and the plan was... the plan is, according to the budget, her request to... which will be an article, but the request is actually in the budget for her to... to work at her request. That's part of the budget. It won't need an amendment to include that. It will simply need a yes vote on the article. If the town does not want that to happen, there needs to be either an amendment or a no vote to the article.
Just can I clarify what you're saying? So presently Danielle is working 40 hours, correct?
What I understand is that Danielle is being paid for 40 hours of work.
And it used to be, there were 30 hours of work and 10 hours for assistant, so now there's 40 hours for her plus, and I'm not sure how much Hannah is working.
Right now, I think it's 10 hours, I'm not sure.
So, that's an additional 10 hours in that.
Correct.
Oh, Michael, sorry.
I had a question about Article 10, the contract with the Witten County, the services being provided. I understand it's probably going to be an ongoing process to determine what service will be addressed, but first can you say something about how that would go about and what sort of things are currently in mind for being addressed? And second, a specific question, the issue of 911 calls came up during the presentation. I assume that those would only involve law enforcement-type calls, 911. It wouldn't have anything to do with medical calls, à la rescue inquiry. Is that correct?
Yes. Does everyone understand the question? Everybody hear the question well enough? So, yes, it's correct that the 911 is not part of the sheriff's... would not be part of the sheriff arrangement that we would be entering into. That answers the second part of your question. The first part of your question is, what services would we get? Or what are we doing now?
What?
Yeah, there is no plan currently. Right now, there's no plan that we're specifically looking at. the plan that we might actually enter into more reasonably in the future, if you don't mind my saying it that way, in next year, in another budget year, would be a town... a multi-town plan for the kinds of services we're talking about. If we entered into this plan right now, in this coming budget year, we would be entering as we would be contracting Guilford... as Guilford alone, we would be contracting the sheriff to provide certain services. What those would be, we'd have to work that out.
I apologize, I've been following you guys' conversation through the meetings as far as where you came up with to get the sheriff even involved.
Can you speak up, Jethro?
Sorry. Was there... have you guys been... have you guys been in communication with the state troopers as well? And then how did you guys decide on the decision of working with the sheriff's department instead?
Did people hear the question?
Yes. Okay. So, the way I would describe this is that we're aware, the Select Board is aware, from people that have come and have spoken directly to the Select Board, as well as to each of us as individuals, about certain issues in the town, speeding traffic is an example. And so, there's a... there's a spoken request for more police presence in the community. We understand that that's there. This was a description of one way we could do it. It's a little bit of pulling a number out of the air. For Guilford to have 24/7 coverage, a police... sheriff department coverage, as I understand, would cost the town a half a million dollars. For us to have this service that we're looking at is something like 20 hours a week. That's what... that's the numbers built around that. And that's based on the current relationship that we could have... we could have or could have had for the last few years with the sheriff's department. It's based on an hourly rate. We selected that number. It could be amended at the town meeting. It could be voted up at that level. It could be voted down, if anything's possible. We were... we wanted there to be a community discussion because this is a community issue. The Select Board is doing some things regarding, like we have, as you probably read in the town report, and we've spoken about, there are radar... and you'll see them, radar signs on Route 5. We plan to put up two more sets of those in town. We know now that those signs, they don't cure the speeding problem, but they have, on average, reduced travel into Algiers. but they have, on average, reduced travel into Algiers, speed travels in Algiers. We know that that's a fact. We've also done a study with Wyndham Regional Commission, uh, for, on Weatherhead Hollow and on Heinsberg Road. We know now, we have data that tells us what the speeding, what, what, uh, for a specific amount of time, what the speeding is on those roads. That would, it's information that is available on the website that people can learn about. So those are a couple of steps that the select board has taken, uh, in response to the, the community, uh, concerns. And this is another step that, that the community can take.
Hi, um, if there's another question as well. I'm, I'm just, um, I'm just wondering, don't we still have the availability of the state police if there's an issue that we, we're already paying that through the state, correct?
We have availability for state, the state police is the state police. And so I think what, what we're all learning is what the, what will, what services does the state police offer to the town of Guilford? And, and it does not offer, for instance, uh, control over speeding traffic.
Well, with violent crime would be a little bit more important than speeding.
Sorry, what?
I'm thinking more about, um, violent crime or, you know, something other than a speeding ticket.
Right.
I mean, the state police are still available to us, correct?
Yes.
Hello. I'll try to help out a little bit on this. Um, the state police with the fire, I'm sorry, Jared Bristol, I'm the fire chief. Now I don't like talking. Anyways, uh, the state police, you're absolutely correct. They do serve our town. They do speed enforcement only on Route 5 because it's a state highway, so we don't have it anywhere throughout the town. When we go to medical calls and we need assistance, we're finding a lot recently and in the last year that they're not available to come and help us when we do need them. I don't know staffing. They cover a huge area. They're spread out. I don't know the issues, but they're not there. Um, we have to make multiple requests to get them there. We've had multiple meetings with the higher-ups and with other departments and with other issues, and it's happening in other towns as well. So I think that's what kind of maybe sparked some of this and what is leading up to this, and hopefully we can get this, and they'll at least be in town if they are needed and the state police are available.
Thank you.
Yep. Are you endorsing this? I would, absolutely. Because when we need them, we want them there.
Sure.
Because we're volunteer, we're not trained, we don't have the equipment, we don't have the training, the, the equipment that they have, the powers that they have. There's a lot of stuff that goes on out there these days that we get put in, right in our face at the wrong time, in the wrong place. It's not the time to want them. We need them. So just to have them stand there or to have them in a cruiser nearby is huge. And we've had to fight for that. And we've had, this year, no, it's actually the last year, we had an incident in town, and one of my members, who's a volunteer, spent 45 minutes in the woods because we had to disperse during a medical call because there was a hazardous situation. And 45 minutes, it took an hour and 15 for VSP to get there at 1:00 in the morning, and that's not okay. So the more the merrier.
Myle. Myle.
Yes, um, so in response to Jared, um, would you be there if he called you? You're only doing 20 hours a week, so if there was a situation, you would be there?
I love to talk and not vote.
Yeah, yeah.
We have to work that out, right? An emergency.
So the question was, would we be there if it's 20 hours a week? There's 168 hours in a week, so do the math. Uh, that's part of the old system, which is that we contract with a town and we provide those services to the town. It works like a contract where we say, "This is what we'll do." Town says, "This is what they'll do," and we meet in the middle. What I want to go to is actually what we're doing right now with Guilford, and I think it's now, I forget if it's nine towns or 11 towns, um, with animal control. Uh, we provide a regional program which brings in the concepts of towns' input to the budget and provides a service across all the member towns. So what we're trying to do is move to a concept that says, "This is a better way for me to provide service." Uh, we spend about a half million dollars a year, I say "we," uh, the towns that my department contracts with, about a half million dollars a year to provide four and a half, uh, full-time employees. That's about 24/7 coverage by my math. It's just, is that fairly allocated to towns based on population, grand lists, and a variety of other factors? So what we're doing right now as part of that conversation is trying to figure out what is our public process to say, "What's fair?" It's not up to me to tell you how to govern. It's not up to me to tell you how to fund it. I can tell you what it costs. I can tell you what it takes to provide the service. And that's what we're committed to, is saying, "Let's deliver the service and let's get people engaged." And so that's why I would love to do this July 1st. I think I could do it July 1st. But can I get 18 towns to agree that July 1st is enough time? I'm going to be a bit pragmatic and say, "Probably not." Um, but that's part of process. Uh, we need to get people's voices involved, and we haven't started the public portion of it. We've been working with select boards, town administrators, town managers, uh, emergency services providers to say, "Are we all making sense? All of this is not my ideas." They're based on 70 years' worth of studies and research from the legislature, think tanks, uh, private researchers, just trying to say, "How do we do things better in Vermont?" And it always comes back to this conversation about regionalization. So that's what we are pushing. Uh, would we support the fire department when they called for help? As best we can. And to the question of will we respond to a 911 call? All of the contracts that I have right now, if we are in town, we respond. We work with the state police. We have a conversation. We have a relationship. Why does it take a trooper an hour and a half to, to get to a call? Sometimes they're up north in Windsor, uh, Windsor County. Um, the, it's not new that there's been a shortage in law enforcement staffing across the state. It's very similar for other, uh, professions. State police have been very vocal publicly about what their current staffing scenario is, which is part of the reason why we're seeing across Wyndham County increases in response to violent crimes and non-violent crimes. It's why we're seeing reduction in response to quality of life, uh, issues that we do have training to be able to provide help for. So I'm sorry to get into that during my three minutes before. Um, I'm happy to answer more questions if, if I'm allowed the time, but I hope that, uh, helps.
I'm just really unclear what this $68,000 gets us. That's, that's what I'm not hearing. 20 hours, but what does it get us? Does it get us, you know, to support for the fire department? Does it get us? Or is it just get us a little support sometime for the fire department?
So...
Does it get us reduction in speed? Or does it just get us, you know, occasional reduction in speed?
Do we get the speeding ticket money?
So, yes, uh, you do get speeding ticket money. Uh, and I always like to say, that is something that is, uh...
A little controversial.
It gets controversial, and we're not here for the money. We're here for the public safety portion, but it is a side benefit to the town. We also mentioned that revenue fines, if you want to support, uh, what we do, as we're effective, then you stop receiving the funds, and then you say, "Well, you're not paying for yourself." We go away, then the problem comes back. So anyways, um, there's a, um, diminishing returns with speeding, uh, revenue, uh, doing that. What would you get? I can't answer that because we haven't negotiated a contract. We haven't had a contract in over 10 years. It could be responses to quality of life issues such as speeding on roads. It could be responses to getting VIN verifications done for newly purchased vehicles that require it from the Department of Motor Vehicles. Could be responding to burglaries. It could be responding to stolen catalytic converters, people breaking into cars. These are things that are happening across Wyndham County right now. I'm sure they're happening here in Guilford. Uh, I don't have the data to support what's happening here in Guilford because it's primarily covered by the state police and not my department. I can talk about animal control in Guilford though. So the, I, I think that really, uh, I imagine, select board might want to speak to as well, but really what it would be is what makes sense for Guilford? What are the things that need to be addressed? And how do we tailor a contract to do those things? Understanding there's limited resource, and I can't cover 168 hours off of 20 hours of free, uh, revenue.
Tara.
Mark, did you say that you're working towards, you'd like to have a new plan, and that is 18 towns, and was the number $500,000?
Uh, what we currently have was, I think we contract with 15 towns and villages is about, uh, a half million dollars. Uh, that provides for roughly four and a half full-time equivalents. The problem with that being Putney pays a certain amount, Vernon pays a certain amount, Athens pays a certain amount. Are they equal? Are they fair? And they're not. They're all over the place. It's not for good reason or bad reason. It's choices made by the voters. So what we're trying to do is push along the conversation and say, "Could we work with our neighbors to do something that's better collectively for all of us?", which is what we've demonstrated through the regional animal control program. Uh, and I, I forget if I missed one of your questions.
Um, no, I have another question though. So if there were 18 towns, and that would give all 18 towns emergency service that could be covered with four deputies, which would be about $27,777 each town?
If we went by, uh, I'm sorry, if we went by a per-town, uh, delineation, I'm going to trust your math.
Yes.
We've talked about different formulas, uh, from, uh, per capita...
Right.
To grand list, to some hybrid formulas. There's, I could talk for an hour on formulas alone. And again, I'm here saying, I don't want to be the person saying, "This is what the voter should pay for," or "The taxpayer should pay for." This is what it costs to provide the service. What do we as a community want for a service?
Thank you.
And...
My question is unrelated to this issue, so maybe I don't have the other question.
Okay, any other questions for the sheriff? Okay, Anne, go ahead.
Can I just say one thing real quickly? I just want to reiterate once again, to be very clear, that when we meet next week to talk about this article, it does not require only a straight-up or down vote. There's the possibility of amending the amount of money. So for instance, Tara just suggested that if we were part of a, a town-wide, uh, 18, uh, 15-town compact that was doing the kind of project we're talking about, it would probably cost us in the neighborhood of $28,000 as opposed to the figure that's in the article. So just, there, there's, there's some play here. I just want to make that very clear.
John, do you have a question related to this?
Uh, yeah, I'm just going to point out that it takes a lot more than four and a half deputies to cover the whole county, so it'd be a lot more than $27,000.
Okay, Dan.
So I...
Thank you.
Often like a town, pre-town meeting, to have the select board and the Dan, possibly, tell us a little bit about changes in the budget. We really only talk about the budget in relation to the articles and special articles. So I don't know. I haven't looked closely enough yet, and I'm assuming most people have. Are there things we should be aware of? Changes, um, changes to the highway budget or just to the town budget? I feel like that's an important piece of pre-town meeting. It's a little education about the budget.
Okay. Um, I can speak, say a few things, Anne. I may not catch everything, but what, what I, uh, and this is me, understanding is that the increase in the budget that we're proposing over last year, let me just look at it to make sure that I'm going to say close to the right thing. The, um... Oh, I see. Okay. There is a, there's, it's not printed here. There, uh, there is about $150,000 increase over the budget from this year, from last year to this year. Yeah, that's about right. Looks like about, about 100, around $100,000, let's say. Though, most of those, most of those $100,000 are inside these articles that we're talking about. If you take $68,000 for the sheriff, 14,500 times two, that's $30,000. Right there is about $98,000.
So other than those articles, the budget is flat?
The budget is flat-ish. The standard, uh, this, just to be very clear, we didn't do the math because we kept these here, but we, uh, I understand that in order for a budget to be considered balanced or flat, it has to be within 4% of the previous year. And I think that if we were to take all of these articles out, the costs related to those, we would get very close to 4%. It might be 5 or, uh, 4.8 or something like that. And the same, the same is true of the highway budget, although, as we noted earlier, we do need to make an amendment at the town meeting because the figures that are in the town report, which had gone to print when the, when the accident or the mistake was discovered, we need to amend that, the, the figure differently. It amounts to $17,400. And I don't, and Erica's calculations on the tax, uh, need for increased tax collection revealed zero or nearly. Good, Dan.
I have to say something. Please, I mean, my highway, up here in the district, we're all, uh, every year I try to level fun, and you do have increases. You got gravel, you got your coal versus fuel. Um, so we try to level fun. I try to keep a tight budget and do the best we can. There's some things you just can't resist with, with the increases.
I'd just love to hear from you.
Yeah, Beth Bristol, treasurer of the Guilford Bonfire Department. I'll speak to our budget. Um, I think it was mentioned when our article was read that it was a $10,000 increase from last year. Um, that ends up to be about a 3.7% increase. Um, if you recall, last year, we spoke about the fact that, uh, we had to raise some of our line items, and so we were able to offset that by contributing, um, $15,000 from, uh, an allocation that we were given from a community member. That was a one-time allocation to kind of offset the increase. And so we weren't able to do that this year. Um, so it actually would have been a $15,000 increase, but we went through the budget and we were able to find a couple areas that we could cut from. Um, and we actually lowered our total budget and only had to increase our town appropriation by 10 instead of 15.
Hi, I was curious about tax-exempt articles? Why some of them are three years, some are four, and it's hard to, why they're not consistent?
Did you all hear that? Uh, I think the easy response, uh, the, is that the, uh, uh, it's just to get it on to a rolling basis so that we don't have six articles to deal with and vote in every single year. And so there's, there's not, there's a, there's an outside limit. There can't be any longer than, than five years. Uh, and so we just backed up a few of the organizations to get it on a rolling basis. Yes.
Um, I'm curious about the Australian ballot.
Can you speak up?
Yes. I said, "I'm curious about the Australian ballot and the budget." Because we had so many, is it an up-down vote then? Or how would that work? And if so, would we then be in the position, as we voted against the budget, the town voted against the budget, would we just not have votes? Or what we...
Can you repeat the question? I think what you're saying, I'll try, Mark. Tell me if I'm saying it correctly. I think, uh, what, what I hear is there's a question about the, the Australian ballot for the budgets. And if we, if the town determines to, say, for instance, in a budget presentation, it gets presented to the town, the town votes it down, then what happens? Uh, there's no, we, there, as I said earlier, there's no opportunity for amendments or anything. It has to be a straight-up or down if, if we, if we choose to, if the town chooses to vote in that way. So what, we understand from what other towns have to do, if it's voted up, the budget passes and everything moves forward. If the, if, in those towns where the budget is voted down, the budget process simply has to start again. And there's, and there can be information, there can be, the, 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 the select board, who's in charge of putting together the budget, can talk with the community and find out, uh, if it's voted down, what would make this better, and the select board can attempt to try to get it into a better position, and then it's presented to the town again. And in a special meeting, then there would have to be a special, uh, election, uh, not a meeting, excuse me, a special election to then, uh, vote again on the budget. And there are towns, um, that have, have to do this two or three times a year because of this, of this, of that, of that way of working.
So, but, uh, a follow-up about, again, the Australian ballot. Um, Hannah mentions that we are... Hannah mentions that we heard quite an increase with the COVID years. So if we went to Australian ballot, would we do as we did during COVID and send them automatically to all households? As opposed to by request, like we do now?
I'm not, yeah, okay. So I think the question is, if we chose to do Australian ballot on the budgets, or either one of these questions, but certainly the budgets, would, would ballots be sent automatically to towns as part of the, is that, is that?
Well, to every household.
To every, to every, what did I say, towns? I meant to every.
But on the voted list, as it was during COVID. Then we might see increase.
Yes.
But if we're just hoping that people will request?
I think, I don't know if there's a, I see Hannah's, Hannah's up there. I don't know if there's a statute. I know that during COVID, it was required that we had to mail the ballots. And there may be the same requirement if you use Australian ballot. I just don't know the answer to that. But the select board has, we had this year the option of sending the ballots that we will have automatically to every town so that people didn't have to request them. And we chose not to do that, partly because of some of the questions that we had on the, that we weren't sure how things were going to fall out at the time. And so we chose not to do that. So Hannah, do you have more information to add?
Sure. Hopefully, everybody can hear me. So if you go to Australian ballot, it would be the select board's choice.
That's what I thought.
If people, if those ballots were mailed to homes or if they were primarily cast during in-person voting. If we were doing Australian ballot, the same early and absentee ballot procedures would still be in place. So even if the select board chose not to advise the town clerk to mail all of those ballots out, then early and absentee voting would still be available. But it is the select board's choice how to proceed in that manner.
Thanks, thanks, Anne. I wasn't sure about that, so that would be great.
If I could just say, you know, I think with Australian ballot, there'd still be a warning that would, and all the articles would be published ahead of time. It would be in the town report, just the way they are now. And because, because you need, you know, you need access to the articles well before the election. And you need them for pre-town meeting. So, so in that sense, it would not change, I don't think.
There would be some scheduling changes, I imagine. Like, for instance, we're voting next week and most of us just got our town report a day or two ago. It's possible that there are people that have already voted in the election this year by requesting a ballot two or three weeks ago before they saw this. Now, so that would still be possible, for instance, with the, with the budget. It's possible that people could vote without ever having seen the actual budget or printed in this way, until we figure out the timing. Of course, we'd want to be responsible and try to make that all work, but we hope, also hope that everybody would have their, their town reports sooner than we got them this year. So there, there's always something, you know, we're learning all the time.
Ellie, did you have a comment? No, okay. Other questions? Yes, Lyle.
I was just, I was from Green River. Just by, just one more question on the, on the library administrator. And she's going to be making almost $29 an hour in the area. Her hours have increased to 32 hours a week. Am I wrong to assume that she falls below the full-time category? So she will not be receiving benefits, insurance?
So, does everyone understand the question? I want to make one correction. It's not almost $29. It's $28.06. So just to be clear. So the, the question was, does that fall below full-time? And in the state of Vermont, 32 hours is full-time, is considered full-time. So benefits would accrue in this situation. In this proposal, I would say.
Does that include the $33,000 or is that more, is there more to it?
Yeah, the, the $33,000 there is, 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 should not be understood to be an expression of the total amount paid for either the library administrator, the library director, or for the library services. That $33,000 is being requested by the library to add to budgeted numbers that are all, that came from previous budgets. And then with previous budget numbers and this number, then the, their, their proposals would be accomplished. Does that make sense?
But does that include the benefits?
The benefits are included as part of this, of the, of the budget. But, but I'm not saying that the 33, I would never say the $33,000 is what's paying for the benefits.
John?
Yeah. The, the request is, would not include the benefits, but the benefits, my understanding, maybe Ellie knows this better than me, but the, the benefits can't be determined ahead of time. They, like health insurance, say, if you're a single person versus you have kids or dependents or you have a family or, they can change what all the benefits are. And so the benefits are, would be included in the, under the town line item for all town employees to benefit. So yeah, so that would be separate.
The increase.
In addition, right.
Jason?
I, this $33,000 added to the library seems very excessive to me. We have, looking at the town's website, it says that the library has 12 trustees and I think eight, or 13 trustees and seven directors. There are 20 volunteers at the volunteer library right now. That's 1% of our entire town are either on the board of directors or are a trustee to the library. And for some reason, we can't seem to staff the library without putting someone in there making way, way more than our previous librarian was making. It seems that the library, it's 800 square feet or so. I, I want it to continue as one of the oldest operating libraries in Vermont. I think it's so cool, the way the library was built. I think it should be run primarily by volunteers. But the idea that we're going to actually pay a public employee somewhere in the ballpark of $70,000 when you're including everything, when you're adding all of that, and we're griping about Danielle, our town clerk, who's a required position in our town, to increase her salary to what the BLCT is requesting that she makes? Seems like we have our priorities a little messed up.
All right, go ahead, John.
So I guess I would say, maybe we can have a conversation about this later, if you want to get into details, but again, your numbers are totally off, Jason. That's, I don't know where you're getting the numbers from for these. But the board of trustees, the board of trustees is, there are seven members for the board of trustees.
So I'm just saying that you have a previous librarian making a certain wage, and then you want to increase $33,000 to that, some of which is a part of the Catamout Book Club there, whatever that is. But then you're not adding the part that the librarian, who is now going to be considered full-time, is going to get full health benefits. And if they have, say, five children, that could be a significant versus, say, they were just a single, you know, 25-year-old woman. You know, so this seems, I know this seems very funny to some people here, but I just think it's a little ridiculous to spend this kind of money on someone that is not a requirement for the town. This is, it's a luxury.
I just had a question I wanted to clarify, because I see there was a slide in there that showed that, like, towns have a certain average librarian salary. And that, it seems like when I was looking at the slide, what we're proposing is under every other town?
It's under, yeah. So what we, yes, I would say, maybe to back up a little bit, to just say that the library trustees, historically, one of our, I don't, I don't, maybe I, I don't know. I want to say primary, maybe I shouldn't say primary. But one of the, one of our considerations is always tax impact. And we, we work really hard to minimize the tax impact for what we get for a library. And it's embarrassing for us to say that we've been underpaying our librarian. We, we, exactly, those numbers, we are way below that. And if we're going to hire a new library director, someone that is looking for that position would, would see the amount that we're offering and would just go somewhere else. So, so what we, what we chose to go with was the professional minimum. And it's an increase. And, and we, we understand that it's a significant increase to the town and, but we can't avoid that. So I would say that. And then that the library director is also a professional position that is, would be expected to have a master's degree in library science and would be proficient in all the, the current technologies that are rapidly evolving. And so it's just like a nature of the time that we live in. And the fact that we've had a library director for 25 years means that we, at the, during this transition, we're kind of going to be playing catch-up a little bit.
Okay, people, we're coming up on nine o'clock. Can we move on from the library? Are there any other questions related to other articles? Yes?
I have various questions.
Wait, wait, I'm, guy behind you. Sorry, Davita. We'll come back to you.
Just, just real quick, and it's, I'm not saying I'm for or against, you know, the library position, but just to be clear then, so you say that it's not more than $33,000 required. That article's not true because we're paying for the insurance. Right? So I guess my, my question is, I'm paying for these articles. How can I trust the amount when you're not transparent about the true amount, true cost? This is kind of a general question.
Yeah, I hear, I hear you. I think what we're asking the community to consider is, these are the amounts that, to our best estimate, would make a difference in the budget. And we're, and we, and the, the articles are asking the voters to give us, the, the select board, a, a limit that we can't go past. For instance, in this case, it's, what is it, $33,000? So, so.
But you're going to pass that, too?
No, not necessarily.
The insurance benefits, you just told us you're going to pass that.
No, I don't think that's what we said. I don't think.
I, I already said that the insurance benefits are not in the $33,000.
That's because they're, because they're in a different part of the budget already.
So you're already budgeting full-time insurance benefits?
Nope, nope. It's a very, it's tricky to understand. It's tricky to understand. I, I get it. I understand what you're saying, but I'll go, I'll go. No, no, neither am I. It's, it's that, it's tricky. It's very hard. It's, it's, it's. What, what, what we have to be careful about is that the, any of these articles, the numbers in the articles are not meant, they do not describe the absolute costs that are there. They, what they describe is an increase over last year's budget. And so the increase over last year's budget and these increases, put together with what we're proposing, is that would be the new budget that we would, that we would be responsible about, what we would stick to. It's a, it's a, it's a limit that the town is.
Where, where would the insurance be located in the budget?
It would be, it would be, it would be in the, it's under the select board, I think. Under there, all the insurances for the entire town are under the select boards, the select board line items.
How does the select board come up with that?
Hey, hang on, hang on, hang on, Jason.
So, so if you look on page 11, you can see that there are lots of, lots of issues related to, that's where all of the town employees are listed as, and they're not broken out by employees, but they're all there. So starting in the third line down, FICA, MEDI, all the way down through workers' comp. So it's like 15 or 18 different line items there. Though, that's where we aggregate the costs of providing all of these services to our employees.
So we wouldn't see that increase for that employee until next year? That would show up in next year?
It's there.
It's, it's.
Our employee doesn't exist. How is it there? Yeah, if, if we don't, if we don't have that employee, how could they, they aren't in there?
It's a, it's a, a budget is, is not a statement of fact. A budget is a prediction of what we expect will happen. All of these are expectations. If you, if you compare the budget from, to the actuals in any given year, and if you went down line by line, you'd see that some things aren't exactly as we budgeted them.
I get that, but I think just for transparency, people don't really know what the cost of that employee really is. And I'm not saying that, like I said, I'm not saying I'm for.
Sure, I understand.
You're saying, just for transparency, people should understand, yeah, you want to increase the $33,000. Question, you're giving gas here, but there's probably going to be another $10,000 or $15,000 that we were preventing. I mean, I, I understand what my company pays for me, so I'm just saying transparency.
Yeah, I'm sorry, it's very much. Davita, do you have any question?
Right, the exact example on Harper Hill Road. I was curious how many households pay taxes in Hillford? When I think of $33,000 increase for a service that provides support to everyone in town from borders to, in the life, what does that cost for a household? I can imagine it's exorbitant. So how many households they taxes in Hillford? How many in Hillford? I have no idea. Do the households pay taxes in Hillford? Every one of them. How many houses are there? I don't know the answer to that question.
I think, I think, I think, I think, I think the answer's, I'll just, I'm ball parking. I won't have an exact number, but it's around 900.
Okay, so let's say a thousand. So you're, you're, a thousand, kind of $33,000 per household to get a 365 days of services, or how many days a library doesn't care, to now have services. And I know Kathy shortly, she's amazing. She's leaving. I would imagine that a new librarian coming in will carry on her traditions and add more to what the town wants for their library. I think that that cost is new and is a year long, and I don't understand. I was a trustee in a library for 30 years, and the library is the heart here of town, and I'm a full supporter.
Any other question? Yes?
$30 for a household per.
Paula?
I am a library supporter, very much so. But I think the question is, is a good one, that, that by moving the librarian to full-time, there's going to be added expense that is not included in here. It's going to be fed into the general employee fund, right? But we can't switch somebody to full-time and not have an added expense with the benefits. I, I am still totally for this, this proposal, but I just, I think, I think I'm understanding the questions correctly and, and they are, I think, legitimate.
Yeah, I agree. John, Megan, quick.
Just quickly to say that when we're talking about the benefits, the, the FICA many benefits are included in that number. Because those are, those are, that's just a percentage that we can calculate. So that is included in the, under the library line item. And so under the other items would be where you would see the increases.
So, we have a subject. I would just like to echo Paul Bellegor's, Paul Bellegor's statement at the select board meeting last night. There was so much work and cooperation put into the annual report. And I would also, I'd like to thank the auditors, our town auditors, our professional auditors, Paul, Kathy. auditors, our professional auditors, Paul, Kathy, Leslie, Erica. There was a lot of teamwork that had to happen to get that report out the door, and I just want to publicly thank.
It is a great town report.
We just can't get it to you any sooner, sorry.
Try for a day earlier next year, okay?
Hey, Rick?
Yeah?
I just wanted to say something before we break.
Okay.
Okay, there's going to be free childcare. I mean, I realize we have a lot of gray heads out here, but there's going to be free childcare at Guilford Town Meeting in the kindergarten room, provided by the school nurse of Vernon. So, also, the Guilford Country Store is providing lunch, and it will be a great time to hang out and continue conversations or have different ones.
Connie?
I just have a question about how many day, will there be a parliamentarian there?
Yes, yes, John Franklin. Yeah, last year, I made two basic mistakes, cost two people a chance to make motions that they should have been able to make, and I will be more mindful this year, and I've got a parliamentarian, if I'm re-elected. So with that, are we ready to break?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you all for coming. Good meeting.